Sure, yeah, gotta keep it. All right. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I would like to welcome those who have joined us on live stream via YouTube. I will now call to order the regular scheduled Apex Town Council meeting for Tuesday, November 21st, to order. And we'll go ahead and start off with an invocation. As part of our invocation tonight, I just want to say I'm a blessed man. Blessed to be here as a mayor. We live in a blessed town, and I thank God for the opportunity. With you, I would like for you to take a moment of solace and enjoy your time of thanking, being thankful for what you have been provided and also for living in this town as well. So we'll take a moment of solace. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. If you will enable, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Just a quick reminder, public participation. If you happen to, if you want to speak tonight rather for the public hearing, please go over to my right and see the town clerk to sign up so we can recognize you at appropriate time to speak. And with that, we'll go ahead and move into the consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine to be enacted by one motion with the adoption of the consent agenda without discussion. For council member requests discussion of an item, the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve, Zegerman. Second, Mayor Protem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll move now to presentations. And we have presentation one, Emergency Management Program Overview, presented tonight by Taylor Sanchez, our Emergency Management Coordinator. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name's Taylor Sanchez. I'm the newly appointed Emergency Management Coordinator for the town of Apex. Briefly, a little bit about me, I'm coming from Chatham County down in Savannah, Georgia, on the coast, not our neighboring Chatham County. I was down there for five years, working with their Emergency Management Program as a Training and Exercise Coordinator. So I was very privy to a lot of different exercise, different plans and procedures regarding emergency management on the county level. So I'm very thankful to be working now for the town of Apex on a municipal level, implementing their program. In a nutshell, emergency management can be kind of hard to understand. So part of my goal today is to bring a little bit of clarity on what emergency management program looks like on the municipal level. So I thought a good place to start off was a clear definition. This is taken directly from FEMA with a little tweak for the mission there. So what emergency management is, the definition, it's a managerial function charged with creating the framework which communities reduce their vulnerability to hazards and cope with disasters. So I'm going to explain a lot of the existing framework, our current state framework. So I'm going to start broad scope and then kind of narrow down to actually what we have in place here and then some projected goals for the future, for future development. The mission, to protect the town of Apex by coordinating and integrating all activities necessary to build, sustain, improve, the capability to mitigate, prepare for, and respond to, recover from basically all threats and disasters. So a couple of key words that keep coming, that will keep popping up throughout this presentation is all hazards and whole community involvement. So that's really key to successful emergency management program, right? Is we plan for all hazards and we involve, we don't plan in the silo, we involve all departments, private nonprofit sectors, we involve really the whole community to get that buy-in, so we are prepared. Some quick legislation, which I think is important to kind of go over. The first one, that allows municipalities within North Carolina to actually have their own EM program. The only caveat with that is that they must be in conjunction or in coordination with the county. So the county has legal requirements to report to the state and then also to FEMA. And then also, you know, for greater preparedness, we want to make sure that we're in alignment and coordinating effectively with our county partners. The Robert T. Stafford Act, what that basically allows, it was, the initial, the Disaster Act was made in 1974. And this basically is an amendment to that. That allows federal funds to be opened up for damaged areas. And basically what it says is that FEMA has an obligation, or the federal level has an obligation to the communities to support for disasters. So that's where that starts at. In 2001, it was important, so 9/11 happened. Once 9/11 happened, the government recognized that we needed a more coordinated response for all hazards, right? Specifically for terrorist events. And then they pushed the legislation, the Homeland Security Presidential Directive Five. What that does was emphasizes the incident command framework. So a heavy emphasis on response, so command and control. That's where that policy kind of pushed. After Katrina, then the government recognized that there was more need for not just response, but then also planning framework, right? So really good at the command and control on the ground, but how do we prepare during gray sky or during blue skies for that event? And then last but not least is the Presidential Directive Policy, which outlines national preparedness goals, right? So we can kind of wrap our head around what does it actually mean to be prepared? How do we start to measure these things? That was developed after that Presidential Policy Directive. Part of that Presidential Policy Directive, that last legislation was the National Preparedness Goals. So here's a quick definition of what it means to be prepared as a nation. FEMA has pushed out guidance on how to measure this. There's 32 different core capabilities, over five mission areas, and involving the whole community. So really quickly, what that looks like is, these are the 32 mission areas. And it's important, from an emergency management perspective, when I'm planning for an all-hazard event, whether that be a nuclear power plant, a hurricane, winter weather, cyber attack, I come back to this and seeing how we as a town fill these, fulfill these capabilities and/or how are our partners fulfilling these capabilities in tandem with partnership. It's important to understand our limitations, right? Because we don't have unlimited resources. But it's also important to understand the networks that we have with the county and also the state to help fill our gaps. So that's why I come back to this comprehensive capability core assessment. All hazards, very briefly, what does that mean? So there's three different types, natural, technological, or man-made. These are just some of the most prevalent ones that I've identified within our current location. You know, we have hurricanes, we have winter weather coming up. Heat, I know that the Hazard Mitigation Plan, Shelley did a good job briefing it, a lot of, a lot of heat casualties here. So how are we planning and preparing for that? Technological hazards, dams, and then also the Sharon Harris Plant. And then man-made, anywhere from active shooter to terrorist attacks to cyber incidents, those are the different types of categories for emergency management program. I thought about also kind of clarifying, defining scope. So because emergency management is so broad, it's important to understand, you know, when I should implement myself, what I should have just situational awareness over, and then what, when I recognize that, hey, I should get others involved, other leaderships involved. So here is just a quick, a little graph that I created to understand. So you have the size of the emergency, right? Where there would be severity and emergency disaster or catastrophe. And then you have the different levels that it could impact. Because when you talk to an individual, like if I always talk to my mother and said, you know, what's emergency for her? You know, if she slipped and fell, that would be an emergency for her, right? Which is, you know, reasonable. But for an emergency management perspective, there's some things that are just, I don't need necessarily know about, but I just have to have awareness of. So for scope, I like to define an emergency management scope as anything that is outside the norm. So anything that's outside the norm of a typical department's SOP, their day-to-day procedures, or and/or that involves multiple organizations, right? That's when I start to get involved. And if it involves multiple jurisdictions, obviously I'll reach out to the county and loop them into our response efforts. Again, this is just another example. This is pulled from FEMA, they have different level and types of incidents, five being the least severe, one being the most severe. Another consideration too, and a consideration when we talk about our Emergency Operations Center, is cascading effects and how long is the turnaround time until that incident is going to be resolved, right? For example, like a tornado may be a really severe incident, severity is important, right? Something that I should consider. The turnaround time is fairly small for that, depending upon the impacts. Or you might have a multi-vehicle accident, first responders are used to dealing with those, it can be a severe incident, but the scale is rather small. So this is just another graph that I presented for understanding the scope. Another, very briefly, is planning tiers and operating structures. It's also kind of important to clarify different elements of emergency management. So planning tiers, obviously strategic develops that policy and guidance. Operational, are those multi-coordination, those multi-department plans, right? It clarifies roles and responsibilities. Also assumptions, that's really key, right? So beforehand, we want to have those discussions to clarify any assumptions between multiple organizations.
Hey, Mr. Sanchez, I'm getting a word that they can't hear you on the broadcast. Can you turn the mic thing?
And then last is And then last is tactical, right? When you're talking about planning tiers. So these are department procedures and/or SOPs. So these are the day-to-day things that departments are responsible for. So as an emergency manager, I'm primarily concerned about those operational plans. But some of it obviously laps over into policy and some of it also laps over into tactical SOPs. As far as operating structures, I'll elaborate a little bit more about this in the future. But each one of those tiers has a different type of structure that is implemented during a response. That multi-agency coordination group is the policy group, along with the town manager that sits that, the Emergency Operations Center, and then also the Incident Command Center. So the guys in the field, guys that are collecting all that information and preparing for policy and direction. So the different structures that are implemented during a response. Quickly, these are just terms that I use, blue skies, gray skies. Obviously, blue skies is when everything is as normal, gray skies is when we actually engage into that Emergency Management Structure. Part of that, it's very difficult to change gears. That's the hardest part about Emergency Management. Is because not everybody, a lot of these are collateral duties for the town, and not everybody is used to changing gears. It takes some time to build up that momentum. Briefly, some of the responsibilities during my blue skies. Development, maintain townwide emergency operation plans and all supporting annexes. So I'll briefly talk about that at the end. I coordinate with our partners, both Wake Counties, surrounding municipalities, ensuring the EOC operational readiness. Plan for greater depth. Like I said, we take a lot of staff members to fill the EOC. I plan to develop that so it's easier, so we can shift gears from blue skies to gray skies easier. Monitor potential threats and hazards. Plugged in with the EM network here. I monitor the weather. Two briefing calls a week. So prepare for hurricanes, winter weather, and whatnot. Advise on policy, Emergency Management Policy Creation, Right After Action Plans. Maintain accountability of inventory for emergency responses. That's something that's in the future. And then also support outreach initiatives to develop that whole community preparedness and raise awareness with the support from our communications and our PIO. Gray sky responsibilities, in a nutshell, there's three different roles that I fulfill. So if you look back to that structure, right, that policy, operational, and tactical structure, I fulfill a role with each one of those. So from the tactical, the Incident Command, I act as an advisor, right? I'm not a subject matter expert in like how to put out a fire, right? Or how to eliminate a threat as a police officer. I do have some experience with first responders, so I know I can talk to the lingo. But I'm an advisor on how to manage the incident, especially if it goes longer, right? How are we planning for turnover? You know, how are we accounting for the logistics if we have to set up a staging area, these things? What plans to implement? A manager in the EOC, basically consolidating all that information in a palatable format for policy and decision-makers to make the best judgment call and direction. And then as a liaison to that command policy group. So those are the three primary roles that the EM fills, fulfills. Briefly, I kind of hit about this already, but the structures, so you have those three-tiered structures, ICS. They're the tactical objective makers, very focused on command and control out in the field. EOC fulfills everything, the logistical requests, building that common operating picture. And then also responsible for implementing the plans, right? And taking on that anything that Incident Command cannot fulfill. And then last but not least is that multi-agency coordination group establishing the long-term goals and the priorities. Briefly, this is just an example of our EOC that I pulled out of our Emergency Operations Plan. There's a lot of room here for future development as far as like job aids and training to get everybody used to how to run an efficiency, an efficient EOC. These guys, the EOC is basically like the middleman between the policy group and then also the command. So they fulfill a critical role. We have, I'm running short on time here, so I'll kind of speed things up. We have three levels of EOC activation with a caveat of one monitoring level. And this also mirrors the county to mitigate any potential confusion amongst the public. So three being the least activated, and then we have two, and then one being full area activation. Alright, and then the current planning framework, and this is kind of where it's key and then where we're going next for the Emergency Management Program. So the Emergency Operations Plan, that lays, that's the skeleton for what all the other documentation that's going to exist. Within that Emergency Operations Plan, there's two different types of, types of annexes. You have a functional annex. And think of a functional annex as a plan that can be applied for multiple incidents. Some examples here are our Crisis Communication Plan or Continuity Plan, right? We can have a tornado and you can implement a continuity plan for that. You can have a cyber incident. You can implement a continuity plan for that. So that's a functional plan that can be implemented for different types of events. So there's a whole host of those that we can develop. These are just a couple. And then another example is a hazard-specific, right? Hazard-specific meaning that it's just a winter weather, right? Or it's a hurricane. Within these, it's going to outline the responsibilities for the departments. It's going to outline the concept of operations, broad scope, so that we can be prepared to have an understanding of what's going to come, the different phases, if we need to hit any triggers. And then, so that falls, those are the sub-annexes within the Emergency Operations Plan. In addition to that, the town has also some plans, and then we also have some plans that our partner agencies and surrounding municipalities also provide us with. Example are like the Apex Lake Dam Emergency Action Plan, the Seagrove Dam Plan, and then some of our other plans, the Sharon Nuclear Harris, their Area Command, standard operating procedure. And then I forgot to mention, but the supporting plans down there at the bottom, that's more of like the managerial support on what's needed to sustain the program, right? Training and exercises, staffing. So currently, what exists right now has only the EOP. It's only the bare bones. Here is just a brief outline of potential future plans that we could develop. I highlighted the ones in orange that I think should be focused on as a priority. That EOC staffing, again, it's so critical that if we do have an incident, that our town is prepared for fulfilling those roles within that EOC. So that's definitely a priority. Cyber incident, as we saw, is also a priority. And then target hazard sites. There's a lot of hazard sites, hazard-specific sites within this town that I think that we could benefit from a specific hazard plan. Kind of rushed through that. I wanted to make sure I stayed on task and on time. But in conclusion, what Emergency Management Program is, it's a comprehensive program management, right? Program and project management, multidisciplinary, whole community involvement. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I will take any questions.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, sir.
Right, any questions for Mr. Sanchez?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
You've mentioned the whole community a couple times. You mentioned in one of your slides, community preparedness. And this actually came up in a recent other presentation that we did, or that we got about, emergency preparedness. What can we do and what are we doing in terms of communications to our residents to be prepared, right? So not just in the moment, okay, there's a storm coming, everybody, you know, shutter your windows, fill up the bathtub, buy as much toilet paper as you can find. But more kind of longer term, like, okay, here's what you do in a, you know, chemical spill situation. Here's what you do in an active shooter situation, right? Like getting some of those materials out there and distributed amongst our residents.
Yes, sir.
So that they can be prepared and not be caught flat-footed, you know, in the moment, right? And so I see a strong correlation with the Communications Department, you know, getting some of that material out. Just wondering if there's any plans or as part of your program, you're envisioning more of that happening right now?
That's a great question. And from the individual resident's side, it's most important that they stay informed. And the best way to do that is through Ready-Wake Alerts, right? Because Wake County is responsible for emergency notifications for all watches and warnings, weather watches and warnings. And they are in charge, the county is in charge of their wireless emergency alert system. So that stuff that gets pushed out, like those Amber Alerts, they're responsible for that. So registering for that is key. I just talked with the PIO today because I think it's December first through the seventh is Winter Weather Awareness Month. I got that information from the Weather Service and I was just sharing that with her. I was like, hey, I think we should push this out. You know, push it on social media so everybody's informed. So just that constant communication with our public is key, making sure that they're informed. In the future, we could do outreach events, making sure that, you know, they have this basic to-go kits. From the individual perspective, the biggest things are just staying informed, to-go kits, and just general awareness. So we can definitely push that in the future, sir.
Yeah, and I'm thinking like, you know, as much upfront as possible, right? Because the Ready-Wake Alert is great, but it's, you know, okay, something is already happening, right? I kind of, you know, think of like, you know, telling your kid not to hide under the bed in case of fire, right? Like, you know, something that you drill into your child, you know, so that's when the event actually happens. You know, they know what to do. They know what to run for an accident, not, you know, not to go underneath their bed, right? So it's kind of that, that kind of analog, right? Like what can we teach our residents to be prepared, you know, based on, you know, a different kind of situation, different kind of emergency?
Yeah, I agree. One potential solution is also incorporating them for volunteers or actors during exercises. That's a solution that I saw in the past.
Something like that.
Anything else? Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Alright, we'll move on to set another regular meeting agenda. I'm not receiving updates or recommended changes.
Do you have, this is just a clerical change, because I noticed on the agenda itself, it says we've got public hearing, one public hearing. And then on the written agenda, it has new business, but on the webpage, it says public hearing one again. So just to make it clear, that's, we, the second one is new business.
Okay, very, thanks for that. Mayor Protem, alright, anything else? Here we go, none? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Killen's worth a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second, Zegerman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Alright, passes unanimously. We'll move now to public forum. We want to hear from you. This is an opportunity for community members to speak. And as the town clerk is bringing over the list, just remind us, three minutes unless you have four more people, we'll give you nine. With that being said, we have everybody speaking for three minutes. So Elizabeth Stitt would be the first. Please give us your name and address. Thank you.
Elizabeth Race Stitt, thirty-one thirteen Friendship Road. Alan's going to hand you a handout. So as you guys know, I follow tree patterns and policies from other communities. And what I have for you here today is the Wake Forest Tree Policy that they are getting ready to adopt as a part of their revamp of their UDO. And what I wanted to bring to your attention is how the conversation around trees are changing. So you'll see on the second page, they start talking about trees in the terms of tree canopy. It's no longer just about the number of trees, it's about the actual canopy. What is that particular tree's going to do? And so I just thought it was really interesting how they put it together. And I know that this information will get shared out to the EAB and the Tree Cap and, you know, the Planning Department. But I just wanted to keep you up to speed as to what other communities are doing. It seems that the city of Raleigh with their street tree program, my daughter got a tree, actually technically two. And the city of Raleigh's right-of-way, my son lives in downtown Durham, he got trees put in his right-of-way as well. And so I know that we've had discussions with the town before, but it'd be nice if the town would look at putting trees in the towns right-of-way. You don't have to have large trees, you can still have small trees. So with that, part of the community conversation I've been having is because we haven't heard any type of workshop around the tree canopy study that, you know, came out a year ago, we're probably going to have our own workshop around trees and bring the forestry agency. I'm in the final stages of getting my forestry certification and my control burn permit as well to be able to take care of underbrush. So it is something that I'm comfortable hosting out for the larger community. So once we get dates and we get speakers and all, I'll let you guys know. But I think there's a lot of people in our community that don't understand what you can do to preserve the trees. And like in this UDO, one of the things they were talking about in certain areas, you wouldn't be allowed to use equipment to put in fences. You would have to do hand digging instead of equipment. And why would you do that? You know, it's about the root structure and trying to preserve the trees. Because what we've heard from a lot of developers is, hey, we want to clear-cut it because if we don't clear-cut it, these trees on the perimeter are going to die anyways. And that is not necessarily true. There are ways to preserve the trees. So just wanted to share what Wake Forest was doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stitt.
Do you guys have a copy of our presentation? Good evening, Mayor Gilbert. Apex's respected council members and my fellow citizens. My name is Ponchal Aaron and I am a sixteen-year-old eleventh grader currently attending Green Level High School in Apex. I am proud to say that I've been living in the Cary-Apex area for almost fourteen years now. I'm here with my childhood best friend, Swaim, who I've known since the third grade. Firstly, I'd like to express how grateful we are to have this opportunity to speak to you all today. We recently had the chance to speak at the Town of Cary September Council Meeting where we gathered strong support, and we hope the Town of Cary will do the same. Swaim and I started off as two teenagers with a passion for teaching and helping others. We began by tutoring kids in our neighborhood, hoping to make a small difference while earning volunteering hours. But as we quickly learned, it wasn't easy to gather enough students. That's when we decided to take our efforts to the next level. In November twenty-twenty-three, we officially launched the Global Scholars Alliance, a five oh one C three nonprofit dedicated to providing free and nutritious meals to WCPSS students. Since then, I am proud to say that our journey has been nothing short of remarkable. Throughout the past ten months, GSA has grown from a simple idea to a fully established nonprofit organization. We received certification from the IRS, created our own website, gathered our social media presence, launched a successful GoFundMe campaign, and even formed a team of seven student leaders. Through these efforts, we've managed to raise over three thousand dollars, which has allowed us to expand our reach and provide ample services to our local community. Before we dive deeper, I would like to introduce some of our talented student team members. Babik Connor-Murri, a junior at Enlow High School. Babik is our Toastmasters Public Speaking Instructor and a state-level award-winning debater. Siddharth Chakapalli, as our competition math and SAT prep instructor. Siddharth is a junior at Green Hope High School and a perfect scorer on the SAT, a sixteen hundred. Yasaswini Vadrevu, a junior at Green Level High School. Yasaswini is a website development intern dedicated to using her coding skills to help our community. Our mission extends beyond just providing free and nutritious meals. We also are advocating for increasing nutritional standards within the WCPSS. Countless students who rely on school cafeterias aren't receiving the vital nutrients that they need for proper development, energy, focus, and academic performance. The main counterargument is that improved nutritional standards would decrease school lunch revenue. However, from our research concerning three hundred thirty Minnesota schools districts and surveys from local teens, we found that school lunch revenue will not decrease and could potentially increase. It is up to us to minimize the gap between public and private school nutritional standards. The cost of higher-quality ingredients is minimal compared to the profound impact on developing America's future leaders. Now, I'll pass it off to Swaim.
Hello, everyone. My name is Swaim Shah, and I've been living here in the Apex area for the past decade. As an organization, one of our proudest accomplishments is our partnership with Davis Drive Middle School. Our team started coaching their math counts and science bowl teams, and our students excelled beyond our expectations. In March, one of our math count students placed third at the state level, and the science bowl team that we coached won third place at the national competition. But we are not just about STEM tutoring. GSA has a mission to focus on something even closer to our hearts. Ensuring that every WCPSS student has access to free and nutritious meals. How many of you in the audience have eaten at a school cafeteria in the past month? Now, we invite you, Mayor Gilbert, and the council members to raise your hands if you all have eaten inside a school cafeteria in the past month. Exactly. So when was the last time you even stepped foot in a school cafeteria? Not all adults, especially those who manage the education system, are able to experience the problems with school meals present in WCPSS. the problems with school meals present in W C P S S. That's why Ponchal and I took the initiative to be able to solve these problems ourselves as teenagers who regularly eat at school cafeterias. We believe that no student should have to worry about where their next meal is coming from, and we're working hard to make this initiative a reality. Through a stronger relationship with council member Saraka Bonso from the Town of Cary, we were able to meet Mrs. Lindsay Mahafe's wife, Mr. Mahafe's, Mr. Mrs. Lindsay Mahafe, Mr. Mahafe's wife, who's a W C P S S school board member. She helped us research our cause and learn more. From our conversation with Mrs. Lindsay Mahafe, we learned that a quality education is fueled by nutritious meals, something that not all students are able to access each and every day. We learned that it takes about two dollars to sponsor one meal. Right now, we have raised well over three thousand dollars, allowing us to sponsor fifteen hundred meals. We are looking to grow this number to be able to sponsor five thousand student meals by the end of twenty twenty-four. This is an ambitious goal, but we believe it's possible with your support. Throughout the past month, we have been working with Josh Stein, N C's governor-elect, as well as the vice president for the N C A I A, North Carolina Association of Indian Americans. Both expressed their support for our mission. As well as that, we've already begun reaching out to local businesses for partnerships, and today, we are here to request the Town of Apex's support in donating to our cause. We are formally requesting the Town of Apex to support our mission by donating ten thousand dollars to go to free meals for W C P S S students. In addition, we would love to work with the town to gain support to help raise nutritional standards in our local W C P S S school system. Our team wants to ensure that our fellow W C P S S students can attend school, knowing that they will be able to eat a healthy meal each day. We know that with the support of the Town of Apex and the wonderful people here, we can make a lasting impact in our community. Thank you all for your time and for giving us this incredible opportunity to speak to you all today.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, Dawn Casalino.
Dawn Casalino, thirty-six, thirty-two Bosco Road. Good evening, Town Council and Mayor Jacques, Mayor Jacques and Councilman Zegerman, thank you so much for reaching out to me on the traffic safety issues that we've been voicing. Really appreciate the support and look forward to working with the council and staff. So I wanted to, usually have a prop, so this is a new prop for tonight. This is, uh, you know, just a regular old water container, but what I'm trying to do here is represent sustainability. So I'm trying to practice, like better practices, not bringing a water bottle here and, and all those things. But how, how, I'm thinking about how our community could be more sustainable. And what I noticed with the new traffic pattern, and of course, everybody's talking about the congestion and so forth, is that I'm thinking twice about what I do because of either costs or because of, of congestion, hassle, frustration. I might not actually take a shopping trip that I might have planned normally. And I wonder if other people in Apex feel the same way that I do about, um, you know, making that decision to go out for dinner, making that decision to go to a park, to, you know, make those extra trips that maybe we can't afford anymore, or it's too much stress. So I was doing a little research online and, you know, there was something that was, is kind of nagging at me is this, this, the city structure and this city vision, and it's blowing up so quick. And a lot of what I was reading about was something where the, the city goes into the suburb, right? But they, they kind of subsidize the city through the suburb. And that's not really a adequate or good growth strategy because it just leads to higher taxes for everybody. It destabilizes the downtown neighborhoods, longer-term residents relocate, and there's a decline in economic pro, um, productivity for the downtown, and that's your restaurants, your retail, and other businesses more in the long term. So I hope that doesn't happen to Apex, but, um, again, sustainability, um, can, can we think about more natural growth? And, and think about how we, we treat our environment because we're living with that environment, just like our bodies, um, we're in it for the long haul. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Casalino. All right, that ends our public forum for tonight. Thank you, everyone, for speaking tonight. All right, we'll move on now to public hearings. We have public hearing number one, Western Big Branch Area Plan encompassing portions of the Friendship and New Hill Communities. Ms. Jenna Schaus, good to see you tonight.
Tonight I'll be presenting the Western Big Branch Area Plan encompassing portions of the, of the Friendship and New Hill Communities. So first I'll provide a, a plan introduction, the outcomes of the plan, and a high-level overview of the planning process. Then we'll look at some public engagement highlights, and I'd like to note that this item has come to Planning Board and Town Council twice since the start of the planning process. Just as a refresher, in September of last year, we shared a summary of the public input that we received on land use preferences and transportation needs. And then in May of this year, we shared a summary of the public input that we received on three plan amendment scenarios that were shared with the public in March. Next, we'll get into the draft plan amendment, excuse me, the draft plan, public input summary, and the resulting revisions, and then the revised draft plan, public input summary. And finally, we'll get to the staff recommended plan recommendations and the requested motion. So this slide shows the study area. So on the east, the study area is bounded by five forty. On the north, Old U S one. The west, just west of New Hill Holloman Road, and on the south, U S one. So here are some plan considerations and outcomes. So what led to the development of this plan is that there has been substantial development around the study area. Property owners and residents have requested involvement for future planning in the area, as well as planning for the Big Branch Pump Station and Forest Main Project is underway. The outcomes of this process is that it would lead to revisions to the twenty forty-five land use map and the twenty forty-five transportation plan, as well as a set of additional plan So this graphic displays a high-level overview of the planning process. So last spring and summer, we began to gather data and collect community input. And then in winter of this year, we developed draft plan amendment scenarios and then brought those back to the community for input in the spring, and then used the input that we received to develop different versions of a draft plan, and then we're here presenting to you all tonight, the final draft. So the purpose of this slide is just to show some key public engagement statistics, but what I'd like to note is that we received a lot of engagement and great feedback during the in-person meetings and throughout the plan development process, and then we, we received less feedback as we got into the plan document review period. So I, I'm, I want to make this section clear as we, because it leads to the next few sections. So the, a draft version of the plan was released on July sixteenth, and a public comment period was open through August seventh. And then based on the input that we received, some changes were made to the draft plan, and a revised draft plan was released on September fifth, and a public comment period was open through the twenty-second. And then we received some comments, but staff didn't, do not recommend any changes to the revised draft plan. So the final draft plan that was released in October matches the revised draft plan. So I'm going to go through a summary of the public input that we received on the draft plan, the first version. So we received a number of comments on the additional plan recommendations, the first being support for the community-proposed overlay district, a comment that a policy to encourage the preservation of forested areas does not address other environmental issues, a comment to allow voluntary agricultural districts and enhance voluntary agricultural districts in Apex, and to provide a fifty-foot buffer between those districts and new development. There was also a comment concerning traffic and safety at the intersection of Friendship Road and Old U S one, and a comment that economic development along the future Richardson Road corridor and at the future Richardson Road, U S one interchange would benefit the, the developer rather than the community. So this slide, this exhibit displays the location-specific transportation comments that we received on the draft plan. And similar to previous presentations, the circle size corresponds with the frequency of the comments. And then at the end of each comment, there's a number in parentheses, and that represents the number of times that we received that comment. So I'll go through the location-specific ones first. The first comment is against the New Hill Loop Collector. Two is to shift Bosco Road further, excuse me, to shift Richardson Road further from Bosco Road and Hensley Road, and a similar comment against the Richardson Road alignment. Three is against the future Friendship Collector. And then comments four through six, we didn't hear as often as one through three. Four is to provide bike lanes on Old U S one. I'd just like to note that that's currently on the adopted plan, those bike lanes. Five is to provide bike lanes along Friendship Road. And six is to remove one hundred and ten feet of right-of-way along Friendship Road, and that comment is related to the town's typical section for a two-lane rural thoroughfare, which includes one hundred and ten feet of right-of-way. And then we received a couple of general transportation comments listed at the bottom. The first is this, is support for bike lanes and side path in the study area, and concern about traffic congestion with new development, given the proximity of this area to the nuclear power plant. We also received some location-specific land use comments on the draft plan, and again, the circle size corresponds with the frequency of the comment. Number one, so going from west to east, number one is to change the Wumble Circle area or the area on the east side of New Hill Holloman Road, south of the tracks, to change that to rural density residential. Two is to reconsider the industrial employment and office employment designations along Richardson Road. Comment three is against the high-density residential in the New Hill Plaza, and I'd just like to note that that land use designation was not included in the draft plan. Four is to change Hazelhurst Circle to rural density residential, and five to add commercial services to three, four, one, three Pleasant Plains Road. Okay, so now I'm going to get into the revisions that were made to the draft plan based on that input that we received. So the first is in that Wumble Circle area, and the revision is to change the medium-density residential and office employment designations to rural density residential, and also to remove that New Hill Loop Major Collector Street from this area. The next change is along Friendship Road, and the revision was to add proposed paved shoulders as the bicycle facility along Friendship Road. And finally, the third change is at three, four, one, three Pleasant Plains Road, and the change is to add commercial service striping, so have that be both low-density residential and commercial services as the land use designations. There are also some changes to the additional plan recommendations and some text revisions. For the additional plan recommendations, one was added, and that was to coordinate with Wake County to allow voluntary agricultural districts and enhance voluntary agricultural districts within Apex corporate limits in the E T J. And there are also some changes to the plan document text, but those didn't change the So now we're moving from the draft plan to the revised draft plan with those changes displayed on the previous slides. So this was released on September fifth, the public comment, and, and closed on September twenty-second, and I'm going to go through the comments that we received, but no changes were made to the revised draft plan. So we received a petition from twenty-eight residents against the commercial services designation at three, four, one, three Pleasant Plains Road. But staff recommend maintaining the low-density and commercial service striping, given the proximity of this parcel to Pleasant Park, as well as the plans for the Water Tower and Pleasant Park adjacent to this property. And there are also plans for a major collector street running through this parcel. And finally, we heard from the property owner that she would like commercial services on this parcel, and throughout the planning process, we've really tried to heavily weigh input that we've received from property owners. So now moving to the staff recommended plan or the final draft plan that was released in October. So here I'm going to provide an overview of the amendments to the adopted twenty forty-five land use map and, and twenty forty-five transportation plan. So the Western Big Branch Area Plan generally includes low-intensity residential uses consistent with current conditions in the study area. So that primarily includes rural density residential at one unit per five acres and rural transition residential at one unit per acre. And where residential is recommended in the study area, it's at a lower density than what's currently allowable in the Wake, Wake County portions of the study area. The plan anticipates limited roadway improvements due to these low-intensity land uses, and it maintains the future Richardson Road corridor as a key regional connection and economic development opportunity. The plan aligns the Richardson Road, U S one interchange consistent with a regional hotspot study that was led by the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. And the plan includes some revisions to the context areas map consistent with the other plan amendment revisions. So this exhibit displays all of the proposed changes to the adopted transportation plan in twenty forty-five land use map, and the bubbles on, on the exhibit correspond with the table three, excuse me, table one in your staff report that starts on page three. So the first column in that table lists all of the map amendments, the second column, excuse me, lists the map IDs, the second column lists all the plan amendments, and the third column is the reasoning for that amendment. So I'm just going to go through some hot, some key changes that are proposed in the plan, kind of going from west to east. So the first is that the Bosco Road area is shown as rural density residential. The second is that the, the Richardson Road, U S one interchange has been shifted to align with that hotspot study completed by Campo. The third is that high-density residential has been added to, to the intersection of, of Friendship Road and Old U S one. Fourth, that the Silver Syrup area has been changed to rural density residential. Fifth, that, uh, generally both sides or most of the Friendship Road corridor has changed to rural transition residential. And I missed one going back west a little bit, the high-density residential portion or area around the future Richardson Road, U S one interchange has been removed, that high-density. And then the next one, the classification of Friendship Road has been lowered from a four-lane median divided thoroughfare to a two-lane existing thoroughfare. And under the four-lane median divided thoroughfare, that cross-section includes bike lanes, and on the two-lane rural thoroughfare, it includes a paved shoulder. So we've added the paved shoulder designation along here to provide that bicycle facility, but it's consistent with the current cross-section for that roadway. Additionally, a major collector street has been realigned between Friendship Road and Pleasant Plains Road to follow the low-density portions, and the purpose of this roadway is to provide emergency access to Pleasant Park. And finally, the commercial services has been added to three, four, one, three Pleasant Plains Road. So those are some of the, some of the key changes, but all of them are listed in, in the staff report. So the plan also includes a number of additional plan recommendations, and just calling out of the few, a few of the key ones here, the first being to encourage agricultural business and agritourism, to encourage development of a small-scale downtown near Humie Olive Road, near the intersection of Humie Olive Road and Old U S one, to prepare a staff-recommended list of zoning conditions for rural areas for developers to consider, and this is already underway. Planning staff have met with council at a work session to go through a preliminary list of these items. The next is to study and potentially invest in turn lanes and a traffic signal at Friendship Road in Old U S one, and staff are coordinating with developers on improvements at that intersection. Next is to conduct a feasibility study to improve access to Pleasant Park, and planning staff have submitted a request to Campo to, to potentially include a study, to include this study in their upcoming work plan. Finally, to review best practices and develop a policy to encourage the preservation of forested areas, and all of these are listed in your, are including your staff report as well, the full list. So now, or at their November fourth meeting, planning- So now, or at their November fourth meeting, planning board unanimously recommended approval. Of the Western Big Branch Area Plan. And so the potential plan could be, if 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 it's adopted tonight, that we would bring back the specific. Land use and transportation plan amendments to planning board, consistent with this plan, to planning board in December. And then come to you all in January. But tonight, the the requested motion is adoption of the final draft plan. I'm not sure if that was clear.
Three presentation, thank you Jenna. Any questions?
I do have one question regarding Friendship Road. And kind of downgrading that or downgrading, but kind of keeping the existing structure just with the addition of the paved shoulders. What is it connecting to on the other side, right? So are we creating a virtual bottleneck by not building Friendship Roads? Kind of to the same spec that Holly Springs is connected is is building it to.
There's a bridge.
There's a bridge, which is, which is a bottleneck, right? There's a two lane bridge.
And there's not a funded project to widen.
Right.
That bridge.
I'm just wondering if we're setting ourselves up for a future challenge there. If if that bridge effort does get widened and replaced. You know, because that, you know, with the development going on on the south side of the road. I'm just worried about the the future infrastructure there.
I think that that is, I think that's a fair concern. I think the reason that it was downgraded is these land uses really wouldn't support. Widening of Friendship Road, this rural transition at one unit per acre. It would, it's less likely that development would come in and and widen Friendship Road.
So with the Campo hotspot study, that area was looked at as a whole, both the Friendship Road Bridge. And the future interchange. And the plan is that Holly Springs would have a four lane section on the portion of Friendship Road. That would connect to Richardson. And then there would be an interchange. So that would be the main thoroughfare. And the two lane bridge at Friendship would stay two lanes.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Michelle, I had a couple of questions. One was just, you you mentioned there were three scenarios that in some. Previous version of this plan that I think kind of ranged in intensity from one to three, three being the highest. Would you characterize this as scenario, most similar to scenario one?
I would. We started, I remember, I recall we started as scenario one as as our starting point when developing the draft plan based on the input that we received. From the public.
Thank you.
And some changes were made to scenario one, but that was, I recall that being our starting point.
Starting point, okay. And at thirty four thirteen Pleasant Plains Roads, did you guys consider? Removing the residential use entirely and just making it a red parcel instead of a red stripe with the low density. To support the commercial services for the park, nearby the park.
I don't, I don't think we discussed removing it completely, thinking that having both allows for options. If to have the low density or commercial. I don't know if there's anything you would add to that.
I'd like to add, the reason why we included it is if a developer came in and and bought up all the property along the railroad tracks with low density. They would be likely to put their rec center up on Pleasant Plains Road.
Okay.
But if it were to develop by itself, it would be the commercial land use.
But a rec center wouldn't support a public use though. It'd just be for the residents.
It would be for the residents and that's why it's shown as residential. That was our thought that it could go one of two ways. It either would become a part of an assemblage. Which it would make sense to be everything along the railroad and that would be our hope so we could get the road built.
Yeah.
Or it might just be a standalone piece for commercial services.
Okay, thank you. That's it, that's it for me.
Okay, other questions?
You're staring at me, okay.
All right, here enough. All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public here to comment on this. We have two people signing to speak tonight. We'll start with Elizabeth Race Titt.
So Alan has another handout for you. Oh, did you already? Thank you. All right. Elizabeth Race Titt, thirty one thirteen Friendship Road. I wanted to share with you what our view of our area is. We're very appreciative of all the work that we did with Jenna and the town. But I think one of the reasons that we feel like the low density is going to continue for a period of time. If you think about it from an infrastructure perspective, down down along US One is where the Forest Main's going. And so if I were to extend sewer up to my property, I have to go through eight other people's property to get to mine. And they are smaller residential properties, whereas I have a larger track. And so if you look at my larger track, there is not enough developable area to pay for the cost to pull the infrastructure up. And so what's highlighted in the dark blue on your map, these are neighborhoods that have covenants. That automatically renew where they cannot subdivide. And if they sell or if they change their covenants. It's like seventy five to a hundred percent of the land owners. So if you look at the geography and the lay of the land, these are our low areas. So if you're going to do gravity fed sewer, you're going to have to go through these neighborhoods and it's going to be pretty tough. So the conversations I've had with developers and all, you're not going to get a lot of development for a long period of time. Because you have to be able to buy out a lot of land in order to pull these infrastructure up. And when we were working with the community, we had a number of our community members who were not going to support anything around the development. Because we were proposing one acre, one house per acre. They thought that was too dense. So this was the best compromise that we could come up with our community to say, you know, to get the majority of them to say, hey, at least one acre. Most everybody here has an average of three to four acres. So the thought of somebody having only one acre was kind of a shock to some. So we definitely support what the town has put forth. We didn't get everything we wanted. There's still some things we want to work towards. But overall, we're happy with the plan. And I just want to make sure you guys understood why the infrastructure was a limiting factor. And why we ended up with one house per acre. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Cazalino.
Don Cazalino, thirty six thirty two Bosco Road. So as Elizabeth mentioned about the covenants, I actually had one. I didn't know I had one. It was discovered. So I'm, I have eight acres. I'm only allowed one house on that acre, eight acres. And I think it was really thoughtful of the people that started the covenants to think of kind of bridging a community and keep a community. Sustainable for a legacy, to pass, you know, those farms on to generations and generations. So I think it's kind of interesting how it came about. And the other thing I'll add is everybody is well water and septic. We maintain it per all the guidelines. It it's not easy, but we we do it because we we enjoy where we live. We appreciate that. And the tree canopy will inevitably help Apex, you know, with their forestry numbers and so forth. So I just wanted to say that as well, we, there was a lot of trade offs, right? There's, there's things that people have been living in the area a very long time. And they're used to living the way they're used to living. So changes is very hard. But I think this proposal keeps a lot of green on the chart, on the map. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was the last speaker tonight. But this item probably hearing is closed. It's back to council for discussion.
I want, I just want to say thank you to to staff. I know this has been a long journey, you know, to get to where we are today. I have not seen any other engagement with residents to the extent of this area plan. You know, we were out frequently with with stickers at festivals and stuff like that. But nothing that's that comes to the scale that we've seen, you know, planning the New Hill and Friendship Community area. So I want to say thank you. I think it's been. Well received. I think, you know, we came up with a good compromise plan. So I appreciate all the efforts that has gone into that.
I I will make one comment that I think that this plan has had a lot of compromise on both sides. I know that there's been a lot of conversations about increasing the size of commercial on that area because of its access and closeness to US One. Know that there's been a lot of conversations about making, you know, placing an overlay that would make it a lot more dense in terms of the amount of housing. Primarily to help support folks over in the Holly Springs area. I think this plan is a good compromise and gives those who are within that, you know, within that area. The opportunity to kind of maintain this, this overall aesthetic and this overall outlook for as for as long as possible. And I do think that when we look at the, you know, the the practicalities. I always like to remind people, land use map doesn't really kick in until people start selling stuff. And and in this case, I think there's a lot of things that will prevent a lot of sales. Or at least we don't see a whole lot of sales happening in the short term in this sort of area. So trying to make this preservation based upon the plan. I appreciate what staff has done. I appreciate the interactions you guys have had with the community and always appreciate the comments of. Those from the community coming out and talking to us every week. Appreciate it.
And my thoughts on it are, this plan, I think, puts area on ice basically, for the most part, except for Richardson. And my experience is that that doesn't last because people, they they move on, they they get offers. And so we'll see what happens. But I think it's better to plan for the future. And it'll be disrupt, even more disruptive if and when that, if that happens, I guess. And so that's, that's my comment. So. I'm, I mean, I, I'm okay putting it on ice if that's what people want, but I just, I hope it lasts and I. You know, we've we've had experiences where it hasn't lasted in very similar circumstances. So, so we'll see.
I completely agree with you. There is a, I think this is, it's a good combination of, you know, staff listening to the community. And doing some compromise. You know, we, we had a another community come in asking for very similar things. And then returning to us within a couple of years to change that completely. So I know that y'all want this to stay this way. I understand that. And I I hope y'all, that does continue for you. So, yeah, I mean, I I support it as staff has presented.
I'll, I'll just add, I support the plan as well and I echo my colleagues' comments to staff about how hard. How appreciative we are of how hard you guys have worked on this and how you've you've done the work and you've worked with the community and you've heard the feedback. And I hope the community feels that they have really had a role in shaping this plan because clearly, clearly they have. This is much different than some of the other proposals. And it's it's a direction that I approve of. And I also, on the other side of the coin, I just want to point out this plan as a compromise. Does correctly reflect the priorities of Apex. Things on here that that are priority for us, like connecting Pleasant Plains, having under egress outside of Pleasant Park. Is clearly something we have to do for safe reasons for the park. And that's on the plan. And I think that's, that's appropriate to be there. So I'm happy with it and I'm a fan of sport.
Motion to approve?
All right, motion to approve, Mayor Proten, second, Matthew. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, pass it down, I'm asleep. Thank you everyone for all your work on this. All right, new business one, electric utility updates, Eric Newman.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council and staff. Great opportunity to talk about two topics that are near and dear to my heart. First of all, just take notice of the wonderful exhibit we got going on here. That was displayed at the Electric Cities Conference this year and it's one of our proud linemen from Apex, Mr. John Rose. So next time you see him, tell him he was famous yet again. So what I'm going to talk about, I got about approximately eighteen slides and I'm going to go through them relatively quick. A lot of the stuff on these slides, we've already talked about. A lot of it, we've talked one on one. Just wanted to bring it to your attention yet again. And we'll talk about some of the things that I feel we need to be moving forward with at this point, stage of the game to help set us up for success. So a couple of things, rate policy, we're going to get into time of use implementation. I know we've all talked about this. You've seen, seen this concept before. We'll get a little bit more into detail about that. I know we put it on hold for a little bit, but we think it's ready to go now. And of course, how load management is sort of integrated. To the, the same issue of time of use. And what are the changes to the ordinance that we're recommending to implement? That load management program. So quickly, time of use rate implementation. So for us, time of use is an effective way for us to reduce consumption during increased times of demand. Encourages customers to limit usage during our peak periods. Our on-peak rates typically occur, and I'll say typically, and we'll go through some, some further discussion on it, between six in the, nine in the morning in the winter. And six and nine during the summer. So again, just keep those periods in mind as far as peak. And it's in place in a lot of other utilities. This is the wave of the future. Most utilities are heading that direction, whether they're mandating it. They'll all be there shortly. You've heard of things called real time pricing, things of that nature has been, it's been out there. And now that we have these, this technology that we're presently installing, as you know, with our meter system upgrade. It enables us to be able to do this at this time in our, in our development. I'm going to go through some, and again, a lot of this is repeats for you. I know we've talked about it. So to how we buy power and sort of the major components of it. So we buy, we buy power, two components, demand and energy. And I liken the demand is basically the size of the, the size of the pipe. Everybody seems to understand water being electric, but it's basically the size of the pipe. And how much water is flowing through it in any one time, that peak time. That is the demand on our electric system. And the energy is the amount of energy used over time. And that's sort of, even to sit there for an entire month is measure, how much water did you just throw into that pool? And you got five hundred gallons. So that's sort of related to the energy. The demand is really the size of that pipe that's filling that up at any one time. The amount of gallons coming through that at any one time. And then when we're throwing another note, which is coincident peak, and that's really important to Apex, to understand how we buy power. We get billed from Duke Energy. We buy, we're a bulk buyer purchaser from from Duke Energy. And our two components are demand and our energy. Our demand is measured during the coincident peak. And coincident peak is our peak that overlays Duke Energy's peak. Now, Duke Energy doesn't know exactly when that peak is. And I think we've talked about the randomness of that peak. We sort of kind of know over history. We pretty, we can do a pretty good job of predicting sort of when we think it's going to happen. But whenever that peak occurs, at the end of the month, the following month, they tell us what day their peak was. They go out to our meters in our substation and they pick that one hour and they say, how much water was flowing through your pipe at that one time? And depending on what that that is, that is a major component of our energy bill, that one hour. The energy itself, you know, I was used to say, they talked about nuclear energy years ago, too cheap to meter. The energy part of our bill is cheap. It's, it's, it's not really worth even looking at. It's that demand part where we pay most of our, our bill for it. And just to go through down a little further, you'll see, and and those are numbers that they may not be meaningful to you in the industry. But the the demand charge, we pay twenty two dollars a KW for demand. The western part of the state, their energy purchase agreement, they pay eight dollars. We pay twenty two. So we have different, different constraints on the way we can, we buy and what we do here compared to our. Our municipals on the western part of the state. And there's reasons for it and I'm not going to really go into it. But the reality is, we have a demand charge that's relatively high in the industry. And then we got an energy charge which is extremely low. Like I said, out in the west, they pay eight dollars a KW, but they also pay like seven cents a kilowatt hour for the energy. We pay two cents. So that's sort of the trade off, you know, and we got to work within those parameters. Now, there's good points and bad points to that. And we're going to talk about some of the good points and what we can do to exploit that.
Can I ask, is that because of the power generation they have out there or it's easier to turn on and off basically?
They, they, they have a different power purchase agreement with Duke Energy because they have generation out there. So as part of that ability to generate and support the, the energy needs in the western Carolina, they get charged differently.
Okay.
On the east, we don't have.
Nuclear plant can't turn on and off.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on the bottom, I'm going to put a note there. It says between fifty and sixty five percent of our total bill is our demand charge. It's actually higher. It's like seventy percent. When you look at just the energy component of our bill. There's a lot of other things we get charged from Duke that are. When you look at just the energy component of our bill, there's a lot of other things we get charged from Duke that are fixed costs. There's, there's other charges in that bill. But if you were to strike those other charges out and just look at our energy bill, our demand is almost 70% of our bill every month. So what are the benefits of time of use? Obviously, they reduce the load on the grid during those peak periods. And, and if a utility is able to do that consistently and predictably, they don't have to invest in generation, right? So we, we can use the generators we got, we run them out. We don't need to peak those, those generation units. If you got to have a really sharp peak and you got to provide that a short period of time, you need generation to do that. So for Duke Energy, being able to provide that is really difficult. So if we can, if we can reduce the loads during those peaks and flatten that out, it makes sense. It'll save the town money on our power bill, obviously. If we can reduce that peak and you'll see some of the numbers and y'all throw out some general numbers just to give you an idea of what that is. But if we can consistently do that, you know, save that money every month, we pass that right on to the customers. If we can do it predictably, we can lower our rates. You know, we want to, you know, our energy charge, as you saw, there was like 2.5 cents. If we can predictably do that, we can just, we can get closer to that 2.5 cents. Wow, would that be amazing? Right now, we have to cover our risk and we have all that other, those other charges. We have to throw on top of that bill to pay for that $22 a KW. So time of use is going to move our, our, our ability to be, to reduce those costs and pass them on to the customers. So why do we need time of use? Well, I, I'm going to throw out a couple of things. There's, there's, obviously there's discussions of everything. They talk about disruptive technologies. We're in a new, new age right now where, right now, the two biggies are solar and EVs. These load patterns have, have thrown a wrench into how we use energy. And it's very, especially for Apex, the way we buy power, it can be very punitive on us. So we need to figure a way to keep those technologies off of our peaks so that we can, we can keep our costs under control. If we can't predictably do it, we got this big, huge risk out there that we have to cover through higher rates. Just goes to say. And, and I'll, you know, I, I think you guys are all familiar with, with EV charging, the, the different levels. There's level one. Those are typically the ones you plug in your house. There's the level twos, which are a little bigger. Obviously higher capacity. And of course, the commercial, which are level threes and higher. And those are, those are extremely harmful to the Apex system in that being able to, to make them cost-effective is almost impossible if they hit our peak. So time of use will obviously adjust behaviors. We're, we're looking at, you know, if you look at studies that have been done, you know, you know, time of use rates have been around for years. I mean, it's nothing new. They've just never been as important as they are today. Obviously, charging your EVs overnight. Apex has a lot of EV chargers, as you know. You drive around Apex, there's a lot of EV cars. I talked to citizens about it and, and they are more than willing. They don't know because right now, it doesn't matter when they charge it. Their bill does not change at their house. They can charge it in the middle of the afternoon. They can charge it overnight. No difference in their bills. So for them, there's no, there's no incentive to do anything different than it's convenient for me to do it right now. When I talk to these customers and say, hey, listen, you know, really, we, we, we need to shift this off-peak, more than willing. You know, most of them have chargers that are programmable, can shift it off-peak. And they stay away from those, those normal peak times, more than willing to do it. We need to be able to make sure that people don't charge during our peaks. And people are willing to do it. Time of use rates will almost guarantee that. I'm pretty sure most people will not plug that in if they know they're paying two to three times more than they normally do. So that alone will help us lessen the impact of EV charging. Obviously washing clothes, dryers and all that. Look, those other stuff that in, in the beginning is a little inconvenient until you get used to it. And then most people, once they're used to doing things slightly different, they really don't have an issue. It's, it's not one of those major impacts. Years ago, I would have said, no way do I ever want to change the way I do things. I got time of use rates years ago and I, I changed the way I did things. And I was in a very high, high utility cost area. And I made, I made it work very easily and it really didn't impact my life. So we need to propose, and again, I'm throwing things out here. This is going to require our finance to go out and look at, we're going to have to hire a rate consultant to come in here and, and ascertain what our rates need to be and how we need to design them. But I just throw out some, some general ideas. Obviously, we have a summer peak. Our summer peaks are usually between six and nine. And remember I said, there's no guarantee exactly when those are, but traditionally, we have enough history with, with, with Duke Energy, we know where they fall. So we need to develop our rates such that we cover ourselves during those periods. And, you know, we can, you know, through the consultant, we can look at those times and develop what the risk model is and we can see what we want to settle in on. But we want to cover ourselves in the summer. So there's a six to nine. The winter, there's a 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM usually. That's typically the peak. And the more concerning is the shoulder months, like right now. We had 80 degrees a little while ago. We're, tonight, we're going down into the 30s. We could end up with either a morning peak or an afternoon peak. So we're going to need to develop rates to make sure we cover ourselves during those, those shoulder months where we can have a peak in the morning and/or at night, just to, just to be safe. So any rate that we propose will have to have that. Timeframe for implementation, you know, we talked about, you know, we've got this meter system upgrade that we're doing right now. Those meters are going in as we speak. It's an enabler for us to be able to do great things for the town. One of the questions, you know, a lot of times you ask us to analyze things. We have a tough time because the data that we get back from our meters is very, it's, it's not, it's not very granular. AMI metering will allow us to be able to make better decisions. We'll know the way our residents are using the energy, the sort of, more importantly, the times of the day and sort of what those patterns look like so that we can, we can evaluate changes in rates and, and see how we can, we can better serve them. Because if we can do this right, ultimately, we want to reduce the cost for everybody. If we have people using consistently energy at the proper time, we can offer it at, at very cheap rates. And, and there's things, and again, we'll talk about it during the rate design, we can have what they call super off-peak rates, which is if you're running it in the middle of the night, I can guarantee you, we're buying that energy at two point something cents from Duke Energy. We can get as close as we can to that and, and pass that on to the customer. Conversely, if you're going to use it on peak and you're going to hit us, we should be able to cover, recover our costs. And we need to be, to figure out how to make sure we get those rates so that, that it accurately reflects. Now, we understand there's going to be certain times. You know, you want to be able to run a load of laundry in an emergency. It's not going to be, you're not going to notice it that much. But your ability to off-shift it at night is going to be your bigger, your bigger bang for the buck. And then we throw in the commercial versus residential. We don't envision, you know, we're looking to mandate only one rate in town. It's going to be a time of use rate for our residential. Commercial, we really can't do that. I mean, we can offer time of use rates. I think it's okay to do it. The problem is, is there's businesses that have genuine reasons to be running during those peaks and we can't adversely affect them from a business perspective. So there may be times that they may want to go on it and we'll develop a rate for that, but I don't necessarily think we want to force them on it. Residents, different story. Commercial, by all means. I'm not going to go into this. I, I have the Duke Energy rates and one of the things I'll just warn, don't compare us to Duke. There's, there's no way to compare us. Where, where they're financially, the way they, they buy power, use power, there's really no way to do it. The only, the only reason I throw this up there is their time of use reflected in their peak and off-peak periods is what we have to follow. So those are the periods that they know that they're going to have peaks and off-peaks. And, and that's the only reason I throw this up there. They've got things where they're getting, their rate structure, if any of you are on Duke's system and you have it, their rate structure is totally incomprehensible. You can't figure it out anymore. Years ago, I used to be able to read those sheets. You look at their residential time of use, there's, I think there was eight riders. There's eight riders on their residential. So when you read it, you think you understand and then you've got to go through eight additional riders to figure out what you're paying. And each one of those riders has crazy stipulations. So it's almost impossible to figure out what your bill is. I tried it and, and it's almost impossible. But, you know, the reason I throw it up there, they're talking about doing what they call critical peak days, where they're looking at during these certain number of days a year where they know they're going to end up with a problem or, or a generation kicks offline. They're going to send a signal and say, it's critical peak, you're going to pay upwards of 186% of what the normal rate is if you need to use power during those rates. So they're starting to get very creative in how they're forcing people to, to adjust their energy uses pattern. But conversely, they also have these super off-peak periods where they drop that, that rate down extremely low because they've got Harris running. And if it's running, they can't throttle it up and down. If nobody's using it, they might as, they might as well just give the power away. And they can do that. But, so they're trying to incentivize people to, to move their, their load patterns so that they, they mimic their, their load there. So again, don't focus too much on Duke Energy. When you're looking around there and saying, well, Duke does this or Duke does that, their cost structures are totally different. Their drivers are totally different. There's really no, there's no way for us to compare ourselves with them. It's only here because of those peak periods because that's our coincident peak is related to that. As far as time of use for other utilities, and I'm going to throw Fayetteville up here and I'm going to throw a big disclaimer up there as well. Fayetteville is, doesn't have the same power purchase agreement we have with Duke Energy. Fayetteville has their own generation. So they have a different rate structure. They don't pay that high demand that we do. But the reason I throw it up there, Fayetteville was sort of a pioneer. About five years ago, they mandated time of use for all their residential customers. Total time of use. And, you know, they obviously, they learned some lessons, they implemented it. Their on-peak, off-peak rates weren't that far apart. It didn't really matter when you used it. And of course, sneaky over time. Yet it started, sell it. And now they're starting to spread their rates. And, and the next sheet, you'll see sort of where they're at at this point, but they're pushing their rates so that the on-peak and off-peak start forcing behaviors. But they, they were pioneers. They went with it first. And it's after the initial little flutter of activity, everybody's settling into it and it's now the new norm out there. Again, so I've got Duke there that I said, don't pay attention to. I got Fayetteville there. I said, they don't follow our rates. And then I got ours over there and we're not using them right now. So I'd only throw this out there to show you the differences in the different utilities, the different summer peak hours. We're going to have to look with our rate consultant to see what makes best, best sense for us to exploit the power agreement we have with Duke Energy. As I said, Duke has got their own agreement with themselves. Fayetteville has a totally different billing system than we do. And we're going to have to figure out what we're looking at. Now, I will say, when you look at the on-peak and off-peak rates, and these were the old published rates that we had that we had to put on hold because of our metering upgrade. Those kinds of rates will drive behaviors. If you see somebody with an off-peak of 23 and an on-peak of six now, I will say, when we had those rates out there, they were offered for years. I don't think we had more than five customers on it. So nobody voluntarily went on it. I mean, it was just too, too radical. I don't envision anything with a spread that big when we, when we come to, you know, the realization. But we may look at a tiered system where we do a, a super off-peak rate where we can make it very attractive for customers. And then we'll figure out sort of the, the hours that we want to cover during those peak periods. And again, most of these things, weekends are all off-peak, you know, so woo-hoo, use that cheap energy on the weekend, you'll be great. You know, so there, there is a lot of benefits to, to time of use that the customer can, can exploit. So that's it on the, on the, the, the need and/or push for time of use rates. Load management, you know, it's a program we've talked about before. We've load managed for years. Upwards of 17, going on 20 something years. Hard to find the beginning. But we have load management devices put on every new house. And these devices, and we'll go through and I'll sort of give you a little bit heads up on what they actually do. We need to upgrade a lot of these devices right now. The first generation ones that were put out almost 20 years ago, most of those are not working. We knew about five years ago, the signal that was being sent to them was using a radio signal. That radio signal, if you remember on your, your FM radios about two, three years ago, you went from it said 94 QDR to 94 QDR and then it told you who the song is and who the player is in the digital. Well, that digital spectrum that tells you who's singing at that point was the spectrum we were using to send the signal out. They just pulled it away from us. So we know none of those switches are getting the signal. So they're not working. So we're going to have to change, change all those out. And we got a program, and I'll show you a little bit further on what the costs are to do that and why we're doing it. We got to change the ordinance. There's some things in the ordinance. We, we put the ordinance out there when we first had it out. There's a lot of things we need to clarify. And we'll get into some of those clarifications. And there are some program features to that that we really need to consider. I'm going to throw out some recommendations to you. It'll obviously be up to the board to, to approve them. I'll tell you why I think we need to do it. And it'll be up to you to figure out whether we can, we can make that happen.
It seems like, you may be getting into it. It seems like time of use though dramatically decreases the need for our load management program. Is that not the case?
It'd probably be the reverse. If we do very successful in our load management, this will probably be less of an effect. But if I get people to voluntarily not use power during these periods where we manage load, then-
The time of use will encourage.
Yeah. So it, time of use will encourage people to do this naturally. This, we force them to do.
Yeah.
I think that's what you were saying.
I'm saying, we don't need to force them if, if they're going to do it voluntarily based on economics, I would think. Right?
Yeah. Well, we, we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more when you see the rest of this program. So sort of the summaries, obviously it helps us to reduce our overall peak. And I'm going to show you some graphs on, on actual graphs of what, what is happening. What this stuff does, obviously these load management switches cycle off our HVAC units, their compressors, their backup strip heats and water heaters. So during those peak periods, Electric City sends a signal and it shuts those things down. Now it cycles them. So the beauty of this program is it cycles it and nobody knows what's going on. I mean, we do this, nobody knows what's going on. So there's really no impact to the customer when we go through these, these cycles. Now, I have down here that customers can select a level of participation, 25, 50 or 100%. What I mean by 25, 50 and 100%, we can cycle your, your appliance 25% of the time. We can cycle it 50% of the times or 100% of the time. In the past, and that's one of the changes we're looking at, we would pay them differently. So they're paid to participate in this. So you sign up, you agree to it. Although we put the switch, we mandate the switch there, the program is not mandatory for, for citizens. They can voluntarily get off it. And you can sign up whether you want it 25% of the time, 50% of the time, 100% of the time. Now, I will say, at 25%, cycling it every, you know, 25% of the hour, they don't notice anything in their house. 50%, they probably will. And 100%, obviously the thing will be off. So we're, we're going to recommend, and I'll get into the next slide. Customers were given basically money to participate at various different levels. So we don't have a lot of people. We may have one or two that are at 100%. We may. 50%, less than a handful. The majority are all 25%. So as far as the status, and again, some of these numbers are a little squirrely because we didn't really have a good way of tracking the old switches that were put in there. We sort of know the subdivisions that were put in it in a timeframe. What we call the LCR 200s was the original ones. We have information that indicates these are the numbers that we had prior to, to 2006. Those switches, those 2000 LCR 2000s, we know are not working. Those were the technology that was shut down. So they're out there. We're still paying the customer to participate in this. We're not getting any of the results. So that's something we need to fix. The LCR 500s was the newer switch. Those are pager switches. And they call that the new technology. Before radio, then we went to pager. Well, the pager signals are disappearing over time around here. Fortunately, we've got hospitals in the area that have been supporting the pager system. We've been told that those pager signals can disappear at any time. There's no guarantee and they'll probably disappear in the near future. No guarantee that those are going to continue, but that's the lion's share what we've got out there. And then we've got the new LCRs, which we just started putting in, the other 5600s that we are going to, those, those are the ones that we can keep, but we're going to target to get rid of as well over time. Those are the newer of the switches. But we got a brand new switch and I'll show you that coming up. So-
So the AMI doesn't have this kind of built in?
No.
Okay.
So here's just a, this, this graph we get from Electric Cities, they actually take a look at our, 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 our load profiles on our substations and they send us reports on what the savings was when they pushed the buttons. And typically, we're saving around an average of $200,000 a month with the switches that we, that are working. We know that approximately, if we were to say half of them aren't working, we know that that number could be a lot higher if we get them all working again. So that's one of the things that we want to attack with the upgrade. They're estimating, we saved about $1.8 million in 2022 was their number that they gave us. They were estimated 2.5 million if- They were estimated two point five million if we put in the new system and we can upgrade what we've got now. The new system that we're looking at is basically the old switch, but it's got two-way communication. It's sort of the AMI of load switches. So we'll be able to have intelligence on when that button gets pushed. That they they received it and we'll also see the load reduction and be able to report on it. So. When people say, what is your savings? We'll be able to sit there and compile all those savings and tell you exactly what it is. So we've got hosting costs right now, about twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the. For the company that that monitors these things to support them. There's a cellular cost because it uses cellular technology and we average about four percent escalation for for costs on that. So just a uh, as far as the six uh, the switches that are that are that are dying. Those two two thousands, they've been non-operational based on that radio technology. The five thousands, fifty-six hundreds are using those pagers. We don't know. There's no guarantee. They can come tomorrow and that pager signal can die and we have no savings on it. We also have a a longstanding problem as an HVAC system degrades. Usually the freon leaks out, the um HVAC contract comes to the side of the house. He says, the reason why your ACA unit ain't working is because of that switch and they call us instantly. And because of our ordinance, if they request off, we take them off. So we have switches on the side that are working just fine. Problem is the HVAC system need to be charged and or it needs to be replaced. It's at the end of its life. People usually notice the switches and or cycling when your system isn't working. You know, your house doesn't keep up with the, you know, typically when your system dies, you like. You start feeling warmer and that house isn't cooling. The first thing they do is blame the switches. They take them off. So we have a lot of them that the HVAC contractors just went out there, just disconnect them. We have no clue that they're not working. So these new switches will solve that problem. We'll be able to see it. That's a picture of the new switch. It's made by the same company that we had before. Um, it's got two-way communication. We'll know if it's bypassed. We'll know if it's not working. It sends trouble alarms and based on our financial calculations on savings and the initial cost. The payback for these switches is about four to six years and we expect it to live fifteen to twenty. So getting back to the ordinance, some of the some of the crazy things in the ordinance that we we'd like to to change. First of all, we want to remove credits paying people to participate in this. We look at this program as basically our town being able to manage our utility bill. The better we're able to reduce that overall cost as a whole, those savings get passed on to everybody. So if we can reduce that overall cost, everybody's contributing to the greater good of keeping our energy down. So the people that are participating are contributing to it. The people that aren't participating are still getting the benefit of us participating. One of the things we were looking at doing is. Although people may not want to participate and say, hey, if you don't want to participate, we have two time of use rates. There's going to be a participation rate and a non-participation rate. If you decide that you do not want to participate for one reason or another, or maybe you can't participate because of some uh, some constraints. Due to your house construction, maybe it was built before, there'll be two different rate structures. So there'll be a an incentive through the rates. So you'll pay a higher rate. Why should you benefit from everybody else who's going through this program and pay the same rate as they do? So we'd like to to get rid of those incentives. It makes it easier as well. Administratively, putting it on your electric bill. Right now, we've got those three participation levels. We've got a finance has got a every month credit them for participation in these things. So there's a line item on their bill. We want to simplify that. We don't want to, we want to track it. We don't want to. Sit there and make sure if you get pulled off that we take that credit away from you because we do a really poor job. Of making sure we back backtrack and make sure that these people are being taken off of the program and they're not getting credited. Remove the fifty and a hundred percent participation level. Nobody's using it now. It doesn't make any sense. And if we still have them and we still pay them participation, that's two extra line items on a bill. We got to manage internally for no reason. So we want to simplify that. Uh, it's no real reason to do it. Twenty-five percent will work. The other thing is we need to clarify in the in the ordinance, we don't clarify that it's a customer's responsibility for the wiring. When they build a house and the and the contractor puts these things on the side. The switch that we give them, we give them the switch to put on the side, they wire it up. If for some reason they want us to take the switch off, it gets a little complicated. You know, who who has ownership of the wires and needs to take care of whatever's there? Our assumption was, A, the switches are going to stay there, but the wiring is is all the customers. There's nothing there that we add. We just want to clarify that, clean it up in there so it's clear. Uh, there's there's no. Because we hadn't, we had one issue with a customer who said, hey, you know, I ripped this thing off. These wires are hanging out of my house. You got to take care of them. And we're like, those aren't ours. Those wires go back to your water heater. They go back to your your HVAC system. We don't have anything to do with it. We didn't put it in. Clarification on that. Uh, and the other thing we'd like to do is is require, as we do now, any new development. But the bigger issue is if if somebody files for a permit for for an alteration that we mandate that. And most of the time what's happening is they're upgrading their HVAC system. They file a permit, they do what they need to do. But they never reconnect the switch or we'd like to give them a brand new switch because if they're replacing their HVAC unit. It's fifteen years old, that switch needs to go. I told you it's like fifteen years old. We want to get it out of there and put a brand new one in at that time. So we will give them the switch at that time. As long as we know it, but we want to mandate that if we see a permit come through, we will hand you the switch, make sure it goes on. And you'll see this in our, you know, when you get to our CIP projects, we put this in there for the next few years, twenty-five, twenty-six. We're looking to spend about a million and a half dollars each year to start replacing it. The first year, we're looking to go after those switches that are no longer working. And then following that, hopefully, depending on how well we do with managing the costs. We're hoping to get a majority of the switches that aren't working that first year. Uh, but if not, the second year, we'll we'll attack those first. And then we'll start going after all of the other switches that are out there so that we get this two-way communication. Validation that the switch is working and it's using the new technology so we don't have to worry about that signal disappearing. And that's sort of the predicted cost right now for this technology and we hope that. We hope that this project gets funded and and continues through. And that's all I had and I figured I'd leave time for some comments. I know I ran, I said eighteen slides. I'd be quick, but you guys all know I lie that. I've never been quick about anything.
Thank you, sir.
Questions?
Uh, I mean, I just want to say, you know, thanks for your work on this. I'm fully in support of the concept. I know we've gone back and forth about a lot of things over the years. And I think time of use, um, I guess the point I want to really underline from presentation is that our contract through electricity with Duke. Really, I mean, it doesn't mandate that we do this, but it heavily intensifies that we do time of use and that we do load management. That's just the way they wrote the contract. They clearly want us to do this. This is how we pay them. I think another, the key slide here was the one point two million dollars we saved last year and that's with half our switches working. So I'm no math expert, but you know, two point four if they were all working maybe, something like that. Like this is a lot of money to us. And uh, this is a good investment and this is um, this is the way. That our contract with Duke is structured to allow us to reduce our energy bill for ourselves and for all of our customers is what we got to do.
I wanted to ask about about Fayetteville. I guess you you referenced them. I'm guessing you talked to them about how it went. I mean. I was good, I was assuming that we were going to have some kind of opt-out. Framework instead of a mandate or requirement. So but they they just went straight requirement and. I assume there was pushback initially and then it kind of calmed down. Is that, did you, I mean, have you talked to them about how the how this all went?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, there was a few. Obviously, you change anything. You give out free ice cream. People are going to want a milkshake, you know. Yeah, there was, there was some minor pushback. They worked through it. Um, they they threw out the idea and they said, as as you talk to any consultant about this process. They will highly recommend that you don't offer that.
Okay.
Don't even, don't even open up the door for it. You tell everybody, just bite the bullet, take the beating. Few customers you're going to get and just get over it because managing that those few. You're basically doubling your, and now you've got different rate structures and all this kind of stuff that. There's a, there's administrative costs associated with carrying something for a very few number of people.
Okay, thank you. Is there a way for people to find out when load management fired at their house? I'm just thinking of the case where, because I've had, I've also had the experience, I think I talked to you about it, where I had an AC repair guy come to my house. And the first thing he said was this load management thing right here. And at the time, I don't think he knew what was going on. Like, oh, that sounds terrible. Like, you know, what's going on?
Is there, well, you can look at the switch. The old switches actually have a little light that says it's in whatever mode it's in. So you can see if it's in it at the time, but again, we don't run it all the time. It's only like a three-hour window. Five times maybe a month that it's actually running. So it's not running all the time. It's not, it's not like your time of use rates where every day at this particular period, you're on a peak period. We're only doing that to cover that that one day a month that we don't know. We guessed maybe five day, five days a month we typically will load manage. So there's maybe five days a month that that thing's being called to to work. And uh, you know, there is a, now, when we get the new switches, there's ways we can integrate because we're going to. We're going to have intelligence on it. I get a, I get a signal from from Electricity's. We can always text it out. I mean, if if we decide we want to do that and make people aware, hey, we're on a load management, which may be a really good idea. Especially for people that have got chargers and all that kind of stuff. We can, we can add that to the text out system and just say, hey, we're load managing tomorrow between three and six. And and I think that's a great way to, you know, keep the customers informed, at least in their forefront. They may do other things on top of it, even if we never went to time of use rates. There's a lot of customers when I tell them, hey. You really help us control our costs. They're more than willing. I mean, nobody's out there saying. I'm just going to use it during that big period. You know, they're more than willing to say, hey, I just won't use it during that period. So I think that's a great idea to send that and you know, I can investigate. We can do that now. We can implement that shortly.
I have one question on the EV charger thing and I'll also jump in, uh, but to to dig into that a little bit. So. My, I just got an EV charger installed, but I'm pretty certain it's not on my load management. So the the general question is when you people get new technology and stuff installed in their house. Is there a mechanism to ensure it's wired up to the load management device or is it just whatever we put it on at the time is what it's going to be and it's too expensive? To can the electrician who installed it, could they have possibly if if there was an ordinance gone and. Did whatever to make it also hook up?
There, there is no way in our program to hook any of that stuff up to our load management stuff. We would have to put in a totally separate device specifically for that.
That's not a cost prohibitive, right?
And it would require, and and there's a problem with that because there's so many different manufacturers and integrating and making sure everybody talks and whatever. A lot of the cars have programming. I mean, there's ways through your car's intelligence charging system when you plug it in, you. Program when to charge it. I mean, clearly, most of the, most of the cars, when you plug it in, you can set a charging cycle.
That's the other thing. I was saying like, you know, you could just have it just cut the power, right? Like the outlet could just go dead for fifteen minutes. And I would probably never know, like, you know, I'm charging for six hours, right?
But it it matches the hot water heater in the in the HVAC was where the load management was connected.
Yes, the other thing is like, it could be expanded all the stuff. Yeah. And what do we do while EV charged? Like you brought up on a slide, we could just kill them. Or is there a way, well, not kill them, but I mean, pull the power from fifteen minutes. But is there a way to incentivize people to to do that programming that you mentioned? Because I think there's an app on on my phone rig. It said it like.
Yes, it's called, it's called time of use rates and I can guarantee you, you will not charge your car during peak during time of use voluntarily. Or or you'll do it once. You'll do it once and I can guarantee you, you'll have a rule and a sticker on your meter saying, do not plug this in between these hours.
Yeah, what I'm getting at is is Duke pays people, right? Like there's a program with Duke where you're getting EV charger and you get a credit and I think part of that credit is you set it up and program it appropriately. Is that a viable model for us or no?
The the best thing for us is to incentivize them not to charge it during our period. That's the best thing.
But it requires a level of. Awareness and competence, right, to, you know, go into your car settings and whatnot. And so. Even though I might be okay with that, right?
Have you seen the people that actually use EVs around here? They're pretty techs. They're pretty tech savvy. I could probably go across here. There's a few of them here. Every one of you guys could figure that one out better than I can.
That was really good, I tell you.
Nice save, yeah.
They are pretty, and handsome. They're handsome as well.
Especially handsome. Seriously though, so um, you know, just like we have. You know, our fire department going around, you know, from time to time and it's like, you know, just knocking on doors like, hey, uh, like, you know, can we help you with the batteries in your smoke detector? Right? Can we do something like that where we have some some active outreach from the electric utility or. You know, good, good willing people that that can help our residents, you know, set up their environment such that, you know. They they, you know, they get some help on that.
Before you, I mean, I had to get a permit, right? So like, it isn't the permitting process an option where there could be some education where saying, hey, like, I noticed you're getting a permit for a, you know, a fourteen fifty outlet or whatever.
No, I don't want to give you the deep dark secret. A lot of marketing permits. Some are.
We have a trigger, right? So like, you know, we we have something that we can can key off of and say, okay, these these people just pull a permit. You know, maybe you got somebody, you know, to to go knock on their door, right? And then, you know, educate them and then set up their car charging, you know.
And the beauty of the the meter system upgrade programs, we're going to be able, I hate to tell people. We'll see signatures in people's meter usage where I'll know that the only way. You can use energy in that pattern is you have a car charger. So we could figure out where all those cars are other than driving around our neighborhood and seeing, oh, there's one parked, there's one parked. There's one in the garage. I can't tell. Uh, we'll be able to see it and we can target market people with education as far as, hey. Let's make sure we're not doing anything during this period or do you understand that, you know, it's adversely affecting the the power bill for them?
Well, I'm sure too, whenever it comes to switching over, if we decide that switching to time of use is what we're going to do, there's going to be a big. Marketing campaign and communication campaign as part of that, we can talk about the cars at that point and the chargers at that point. To make people aware that, hey, you're going to get a really big bill if you do this at the wrong time. So.
Especially if if the time of use doesn't change like very much and they kind of know like the times to not do that. I think people will, you know, automatically just not plug in the car or the dishes or do the uh, washing the clothes. If it's kind of like stays the same throughout, that would probably be enough. I think most people would.
And I think we also talked about in our work session, just for anyone watching, like we talked about a transition period where maybe we'd show them both bills and say, hey. Like, we're still on the old system, but this time you think it's coming in six months or whatever, and this is what your bill would have been under the new system. If this number is higher than this number, like consider changing when you run your dishwasher or something like that. Or if it's a lot lower, maybe they call up and say, flip me over today, something like that.
Or use the six months or that discretionary period to figure out what does it look like in changing your behaviors and and see the results. And see what those activities, because you may do something you think is very impactful and it does nothing. And you say, okay, well, I don't need to do that anymore, uh, but I did this and it really changed it a lot and.
As we wrap, as we wrap up.
I have a couple more things that I want to run through. So we're not, can I please? So first of all, like, you know, I grew up at time of use, right? I never knew anything different until I moved to the United States. And yes, like, you know, behaviors will adjust easily. We also at some point talked about, you know, in addition to the the two. Things that we just spoke about tonight, time of use and the uh, load management. Having some uh, generative capacity of our own, uh, even though we cannot generate, like, you know, we were talking about battery backup and and such. What I would like to understand is like, you know, kind of the combined effect of all of those measures, right? Because I I think we can really make a dent in that in that peak use or that coincidental coincidental use. Coincidental uh, use, uh, you know, that that those couple hours, right? If we combine all the, you know, the the combined effect of all these measurements and. Um, I'd like to understand, not now, but but in some future uh, updates, you know, where we are with with evaluating that battery backup. Capacity, cost, benefit and so forth. Um, and then um, the other question I had is that, you know, smart thermostats. There's a lot of people that have smart thermostats and um, right, and so. My thermostats have an option to, hey, you know, go check with your utility if there's a load management system in place, right? It also tells me that, yeah, I'm sorry, your utility doesn't offer this right now. So is there something that we can do? To enable these smart thermostats and and kind of force load management through the thermostat. Instead of relying on these external devices.
Yeah, so Electricity's does have a cooperative cooperation with a couple of thermostat manufacturers. We could look at integrating thermostats, um, similar to what Duke Energy does. We chose not to do it at the time. There was costs associated and we we still have bigger issues and we didn't want to integrate yet another. Technology that, you know, if we get a smart thermostat, it negates the fact that we already put a a um. Load management switch on the side of their house. So you're you're basically double dipping off of the. You know, we've already taken care of it there and you've got, I do like the the smart thermostats. I do believe over time. If we had no load management switches, had time of use, people would program their thermostats. To shut off during those periods or lower their usage during those periods naturally. Now, if time of use does what I think it'll do, it may drive it down to the point where load management is no longer a viable program for us. And it would be great to see, we, you know, obviously, we'll be able to track our load graphs when we push the button. graphs when we push the button, we see the, the results. As those results start shrinking, we'll probably reassess the fact that, you know, maybe it's time to get out of the load management. I don't like being in the load management business. It's, it's not something I like to do. It's something we need to do because it saves us money, but boy, I would like to get out of that whole business and have people either do it naturally through their smart thermostats, smart programming, their EV. If they were able to do that, holy smokes, that'd be great. I'd be all for it.
Right. I think the mayor's in a hurry, so I'll deal with that.
I just want to hear from my town manager, I got updates I need to hear about.
Oh, okay.
I appreciate the wonderful presentation. Uh, any other questions, I guess just send them through manager of Osper. Thank you so much for all you do.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right. It's on you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank staff for sticking around for my update. I just have a few items. Uh, the first item, this was communicated to council but wanted to mention it, uh, for the public. Uh, we do have our contract in place with our third party reviewer related to the utility issues. Uh, that's with Barry Dunn, uh, that contract's in place and we have begun the coordination with them, uh, with a full scope wrap up, uh, in February. Doesn't mean there won't be things that come out along the way, uh, but we anticipate full wrap up, uh, by the end of February on that project. Next item, as an FYI, the Tunstall House went out to bid this week. So that was on the street and we hope to, uh, get some competitive bids on that project. Uh, next item is, uh, positive to Craig. Craig left, noted that Craig's not here. Uh, we, we received an award for Pleasant Park, uh, related to the engineering. It was from the, uh, American Council of Engineering in North Carolina and it's the 2025 Engineering Excellence Award for Pleasant Park. So we'll share some additional information on that, but very excited about, uh, what's in place in that park. And the last item that I have is an update on the detour and Whitehall Manor to, uh, let you know we remain engaged. Um, I've got a report, uh, in front of me from our police department, uh, there, they've employed the five E's there, which is engagement, education, engineering, enforcement and evaluation. So we're hitting it on all fronts. Uh, we have, in terms of speed monitoring, uh, the speed limit's 25 miles per hour. Uh, we're seeing average speeds, uh, southbound 17 miles per hour, northbound 22. So we're within our speed, um, issues, even the 85th percentile is still below the speed limit, so we don't believe we have a speeding issue. Uh, of course, we know that could be, uh, because of our police, increased police presence, but we intend to have that out there. Uh, we have seen, uh, a decrease in volume. It's certainly higher than what the residents are used to because of the, the detour, uh, but it has since the beginning decreased in volume. We also, uh, the biggest issue that we're seeing on the enforcement side is, uh, stop sign violations. And I think you've received emails on that, some rolling stops. Uh, so we've had a number of, um, citations we've issued related to the stop sign. We continue to, our plan is to continue looking at enforcement. We have made some changes, um, related to signage. We've, uh, trimmed up some, some limbs out there to increase visibility to the stop sign. Uh, we put some reflectors on the stop sign. If you didn't see the big red octagon there, we've also put some red on the pole to make sure it stands out. We did that prior to really getting heavier on the enforcement side to make sure people were aware of that, uh, being in place. We're continuing to, to evaluate and, um, we, we do believe that the speed humps are, are effective and we're seeing that in the speed, uh, but, uh, continue to be engaged. Please pass along any feedback that you receive. On the education side, we've met numerous times with HOA and we're working with them, um, to get their feedback as well. Uh, so we're, we're still engaged and committed to, um, making some changes there when needed. So please pass along any feedback that you have for us. And that's all that I have.
Thank you so much, sir. Any questions?
I live on the detour and so I, I have, uh, I have noticed speed not being a big deal, but I can attest that my, my neighbors definitely appreciate, um, the enforcement that's been out there and the, and the thoughtfulness that's gone into this, uh, since the initial rush, so, yeah.
All right, good enough. All right, is there a motion to go into closed session for the five items listed on the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion again, second. Is there a man, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Fashion Adams, we're going to close sessions.
We're live.
We're live.
Alright, any other business?
Alright, I'm sorry, I was out of mind.
Business, thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Don't do that.